I call this budget work session, special board meeting of the Newbury County School District to order. We have a quorum present with six members present and need to have a motion please to approve our agenda.
Shall move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, I need a motion for us to move into executive session to discuss personnel resignations and recommendations.
Shall move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.[564.02][564.02](applause)
...
We return to open session. Is there any action from executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the administration's recommendations for hiring and transfers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we will move to our budget work session. And I believe Ms. Dale.
Hey, is everyone here from the city right here? Is it going to be in opinion or?
Anybody.
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Then let's start, you should have a copy of our revenue and expenditure projections for 21, 22 venture places, and I'm just going to start with our revenue projections. You're seeing, and for those of you that have looked at this in previous years, you're seeing it a little bit differently than usual. I've got three years sitting there, and the reason that I did that is it was helpful to me to see the FY '20 projected revenue because that is the year that we brought over as a continuing resolution for 2021. That's what we had projected, and that's the actual revenue budget that we have been working under for 2021 from our continuing resolution. So, I'm not going to talk a whole lot about that, but it's there for reference. I'm going to talk about the 21 projected revenue, which is the year that we're in, and then the 22 projected revenue, the year that we're planning a budget for. And I'm doing that because, you know, the revenue that we're receiving this year is actually something we have to take into consideration when we talk about next year. So on the local side of that, for current taxes for operations, what I'm seeing so far, if I take what we've received through March, and what we received from April through June last year, which is how I typically do our budgets, I'll look at what we got historically, I add that to what we've received already, and I come up with what I feel like is going to be what we're looking at for this year. And then I project that into the next year. So this year, I feel like we have potential to actually have $17.6 million in FY '21 projected revenue. I brought that over into FY '22, and I did the same thing with the delinquent taxes and revenue and lieu taxes. It appears that we could get upwards of $145,000 in delinquent, and for revenue and lieu taxes, $2.8 million. When you go down and further into our local revenue, the one item that is really stands out is we are getting very little interest revenue right now, and so I've had to really decrease that and to be in line with what we're actually receiving. So you go down, and so total local revenue, what I'm looking at for potential for this year and then carrying into '22 is $21,325,273. Do you have any questions pertaining to local? Or did I explain that carefully enough that you understand how I'm projecting that? Okay. So let's go to state revenue then. The first line is our Education Finance Act. That's obviously our biggest dollar amount that we look for from state revenue. As you can see, we were definitely reduced during 2021 from what we had projected from $15.3 million to $14.3 million. And that is due to the number of students that were not here in our district this year. Now, if you go over '22, I will tell you, I do not have our Senate Finance projections yet. I do know that they moved the base student cost to $25.16, and so I am able to put that in the formula that I know they use to determine our mail and give us an estimate for 21, '22 with the $25.16 base student cost. But other than that, I do not have our U.S. Senate projections yet. I was really hoping that we would, but I do not. So, we go from where we are, where they're telling us we are for this year, which is $14.3 million, to not much more, $14.5 million with the $25.16 base student cost. We are at $24.89 this year, and $25.16 is not giving us really a whole lot more. It's not even getting us to where we had projected for the previous year. Okay, so property tax relief of $2.148 million, that's Tier One, and then Tier Two of $1.2 million home state extension, that is really the same every year and does not change. What does change is Tier Three. We do have the estimate from the Budget and Control Board. It is to go to $6,407,000 for '22. The next few lines, manufacturers' depreciation, merchants inventory, and motor carrier, they are considered state, but I get these funds come through the County Treasurer, and I get reports on those monthly. And so I'm looking at what we've received so far there, and I'm projecting next year's budget to be similar to this year, which was $551,000 for manufacturers' depreciation, $158,000 for merchants inventory, and $303,000 for motor carrier. So I have some slight changes there. EIA transfer for teachers' salaries, that's always a part of our projections from the State Department. I am using Ways and Needs numbers for those numbers, not Senate Finance. It's in that estimate, and that's EIA transfers, $1,850,000. State aid to classrooms for teacher salary, $1,310,000. School bus progress salary revenue, $630,000. Fringe benefits employer contributions, $6.9 million. The PIBA retirement credit, that was the one year that they decided to send the 1% to PIBA. They only did that one year, and so every year PIBA has to credit our deal by that amount, and that stays the same. That's back in the budget, $363,000. The retirement increase, we did not have a retirement increase for this current year. It is supposed to be 1% again for next year, but they have not given me any projection on that amount yet, so I have left that alone. I should have something there, I hope, or at least an increase in my fringe benefits contributions to account for that 1%. Now, that 1% that they give us is strictly for teachers. They do not give us the 1% for every other employee when they put it in the budget. Okay? Retiring insurance, I'm looking right now at $1.7 million there. So what we're looking at is $38,148,000 for state revenue projection. This is strictly an estimate, I really hope by the end of the week, indefinitely by our next work session, I feel like we'll have some Senate projections and some new numbers there that I'm hopeful will help us when we need it. Any questions on state revenue? Okay? Okay, there's a change on the next one. Federal programs indirect cost. We are allowed every year to take indirect cost on federal programs. That's Title I, Title II, Title VI. It's whatever federal program we have, we are allowed to take indirect cost. Well, we are also allowed to take that on our new ESER funds. And all of my colleagues that I've talked with other districts, they are definitely doing that with their ESER funds. Now, what we have to remember in this regard is that ESER funds are not always going to be here. However, I feel like this is going to be very beneficial to us to remember and include that in what we will use for our budget because we are able to take indirect cost and plan to do so, and that will increase the amount of revenue with that line whenever we're looking at revenue for this coming year. So I have added what I suspect or estimate that to be.
How do you get that figure?
I look at that, I look at our total allocation for ESER II, and you can take indirect cost on anything other than equipment type items. And so I estimated what I think our expenditures will be for next year out of ESER II and took a 10% of that because you can take anywhere between your restricted and unrestricted rate, and I use 10% of that amount. Okay, so we get to the end here, and our estimated revenues today are $60,015,512. As you can see, really not a whole lot more than what we had projected for 1920 due to the reduction in the EFA nightly. Any questions before we move to expenditures?
According to three columns here, are you saying at the bottom line that the total revenue budget this year will actually come in under the continuing resolution budget we were operating under? Or is that just the way the numbers added up since you left a couple of state, or that one state thing up?
I think it's possible that it could come in under, yes, sir.
Okay.
It really kind of all depends on how local revenue comes in based on my estimates.
No.
Okay. 21, '22 expenditure budget. I always start out with what we're working under in the current year, and that's the So what I did from there was look at what we should be, what we're having to do this year, which is our step increases. The legislature advocated and said, yes, we have to get our step increases to our teachers and nurses, and I've got an estimate there for that at $300,000, and we will get revenue for that, but I'm not sure where it's going to sit. I'm thinking that it could already be in our $25.16 base student cost that I've already got the revenue sitting in, and I don't know if I'll get anything in addition to that for those steps. Don't have Senate projection numbers. I mean, I'm hopeful that that could change and that I've got some increased revenue, but I've got to include these expenditures because I'm including revenue that I think that's already there, so I've got to have that offset in there. And then all other step increases for all other staff that you approved for last board meeting, and I'll remind you all, these steps for teachers and every other classification are what we would have done at the very beginning of the school year if you were, based on your salary schedule and where you fell in line with those steps. It would have been done in August had we been able to do that from the legislature and the board for others. And we would have started in August, it would have been, you know, given throughout the year. What we're looking at now is the legislature saying, we think our budget's good enough for you to go ahead and retro those steps that you would have given at the beginning of the year. So that's why all of that is included at the beginning before we go into actual 21, '22 expenditures. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. So let's first talk about what positions we think we are going to need in the district. We're looking at overall three FTE possible classroom positions, and that's based on projections of adding a position at Bounder Street, reducing a position at Little Mountain Elementary, adding a position at Prosperity Riker, and two positions at Newbury Middle School. So those are classroom projections we made with principals in January and talked with them about what they thought things were going to look like for next year, and this is how we come up with this, where we need. On the next line, we are looking at a classified position increase of an additional technician in technology at the Technology Department. You know, taking away the fact that we live one-to-one this year because we did, and we all know that that's a huge number of extra devices, but even prior to that, we have definitely a huge number of devices per technician that they work with, and we feel that it would be beneficial to that department to add another technician.
We added one last year, correct? Pretty sure we did, didn't we?
We didn't do anything last year because we had a continuing resolution.
Okay. Well, previous.
I would have to pull that back out.
It's the previous year because I made a connection of it.
I think she did. I remember adding one because we were kind of way behind in that part.
Okay, so the next one, I'm just putting it in here for information basically because it does not affect our general fund budget, but there are going to be seven elementary math interventionists that are budgeted in our ESER II funds that you approved at our previous board meeting that I'm just giving an estimate there of what that would cost, but they are additional positions in the district, and I wanted to show that on the information that I was giving you.
This is a non-financial question. Where are we going to find them?
We're interviewing right now. We have a lot of principals that are conducting their interviews this week, and we have had a lot of interest in that.
I don't want to take good teachers out of the classroom is the reason I ask you.
Yeah, the wheels are turning with how things are going to shake out for our folks.
Okay, so that kind of ends the actual staffing increases for the district, and then we go into other types of increases that we want to consider. For technology, we've had an increase in the registration software that we use in our schools. We've had increases in the maintenance contract for our cameras and our phone maintenance, and because of that, we are asking for a $64,000 increase into the technology line items that would include those things that we pay for in those areas.
Ms. Dale, I don't know now, would that come under? Because I know at one point we had talked about the possibility of maybe looking at insurance for our devices. Would that come under that?
If we were going to do that, we would, that's not included in the $64,000.
That's not included.
But we would have to look at that and add that to that line, to that line, to the
technology line if we do that. Okay, so facilities management. We've got $37,000 increase in there because of increased costs that we've had in the repairs and maintenance line, and $25,000 for increased costs that we've had in parts, which is the supply line for facilities management. And then, we have a very high need right now for service vehicles. Our vehicles are many are in excess of 200,000 miles on them, and we are struggling a little bit in that area. And if y'all got any questions, you know, I'm sure Mr. Ross will be glad to fill in further, but right now, this would cover, this $62,000 could cover the cost of potentially needing to replace two of those service vehicles because they are extremely old. Okay, the next one is a little bit different because we are looking at potentially having a shortfall next year, maybe. We don't know if our kids are coming back. We don't know how many new students will come back that left us. I'm trying to be a little bit creative with my ESER II funding, and the way that I feel like, one of the ways I feel like we could do that is with a cleaning contract and including a line in ESER II for cleaning that would really, could really help us if we need it. I'm not taking out the custodial contract budget in any kind of way. I don't, I'm not taking out the custodial contract budget in any kind of way. It's still going to be in our budget, it's there. We have to pay that every year. However, cleaning and disinfecting is still a big thing for, for, as we go further in, in ESSR, with our ESSR funding, and it's a part of what you can budget there. And if needed, I feel that we could actually include funding and pay for part of our custodial cleaning out of ESSR 2 if we need it. Does that make sense?
Well, why wouldn't we put that on the revenue side?
Because this is a general fund budget and the, the revenue would be coming from ESSR 2 and not from, and not from general fund dollars.
So where is the offset of that? Where is the current?
You will see it at the end.
Okay.
Because the way I look at it is, if we get additional rest state revenue because students come back, my anticipated revenue is going to be higher than $60 million fifteen thousand five hundred and twelve. If we get enough to overcome what I see, what you look at right now, that's a $404,000 shortfall, I won't need to use those ESSR 2 funds for my custodial cleaning contract, and I'll use it for other things in this district that we need to use it for.
I guess that's my question. If we know we can get it, we know it's a legitimate use of it, we could show it as revenue right now, and you feel comfortable using that $500,000 to pay it. Is that amount of the contract, $500,000?
No, it is not. This is quite.
How much is the contract?
I don't feel comfortable doing that. I, I feel like, because it's ESSR 2 revenue, I can't.
You have to justify it some kind of way, correct?
Sir.
We would have to justify.
Yeah, we've got to justify it. I mean, I'm going to call it.
In other words, over and above, cleaning over and above what the normal contract is.
Is how I'm going to, to, to indicate it in ESSR 2, yes.
Okay.
So what is the, the current cost of our maintenance contract?
Um.
You don't have it now, I don't have to have it tonight, I understand. What percentage would you say $500,000 is?
Um, probably a little less than 50.
Yeah, it's a little less than 50.
Okay.
It's a little north of a median. I don't know the exact figure, I'd give it.
Just trying to get.
But this is strictly a placeholder for me. I'm, I'm looking at this only in me. I just don't, we have so, we have other these capital things that we can use ESSR 2 funds for that I feel like we need to do for non-recurring type things if we can. I'm, I'm really hoping that, that our EFA revenue gets boosted back up, you know, that, that we, that we get more step dollars than what we're looking at right now, and if that's the case, then I feel like this is, this would not have to happen.
Okay.
That, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. Okay, CPI increase. We, we typically have contracts like our, like our custodial or our loan maintenance that, that ask for a CPI increase, um, when, when possible, and this year the CPI percentage is .96, and, um, I'm estimating that to be $17,250 right now. Okay, the final, um, line to look at is, are what we look at for, for step increases for the new year, and I'm, I'm including the teacher step increase there at three hundred thousand. Um, I broke down the classified, the middle school administrative, D O administrative, uh, steps there, um, for, at each line, and then, um, I included the health insurance increase. We have been told that there's going to be a 2.6% increase in health insurance, and we've also been told that that is not budgeted for us to get any funding for that. I don't really, I, I, this is a very, very, this estimate here is, 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 I'm not sure that it might not grow. I'm not, I'm not comfortable that that's, that that's enough there yet. And I'm really not going to know until I run steps for teachers and everybody else in the, that, for next year, see where everybody is on their health insurance levels, and, and also get a new teacher salary schedule. The teacher salaries are, are, um, supposed to be increased by a thousand dollars at every level, and so, um, I don't even, I don't have that yet. I don't have any new projections or any new salary schedule numbers, and, and I really, I, I'm, I'm going to have to revisit that line right there before the next meeting, as well as the retirement increase for, for that same reason, and, and I don't know those numbers yet, so.
That teacher salary increase is supposed to be fully funded there, correct?
Yes, it is, it is. But the health insurance increase for that will not be, and the only retirement funding they give us is increases for teachers. They don't give that for any other employee. So that is the, the, what we prepared to, to give you tonight for, for expenditures. And I'll, I'll take any questions you have, but you, you can see though, based on what we talked to you about with the, with the custodial and cleaning, that if we had to use that, that number, we would actually be ninety-five thousand to the good and not four hundred and four thousand, you know, shortfall. So that's, that's kind of why that's in there. I don't have an approved ESSR 2 application yet, so that's, that's got to go through, but I don't anticipate that being an issue, so.
So have we done an ESSR 2 transaction? Have we tapped into some of that money and asked for reimbursement and actually got?
We have not because we don't have it approved.
We have nothing yet.
We don't have anything yet.
How about the first level of funding, the CARES Act?
We, we do have all of that.
That was reimbursed?
It's already been spent, yes, sir, all year.
On the certified position increase there, you had listed, um, as far as the pluses and the minuses?
Yes.
Does that include, I mean, for the, you know, all the other schools that aren't on here, does that mean that they get to keep the positions that they have now, that there's no minuses or adding there? That everybody that's in that school building?
Yes.
Stays in the positions that they're in?
Yes.
So like if somebody, you know, was a floater position that still stays in, you know, that teacher would still be a floater in that particular school, or?
Um, I'm not sure where, I mean, this is, this is the, the pluses and minuses that I have right now.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
And that's based on, in, in the past, that's based on our enrollment, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Given the problems we have recruiting teachers and keeping teachers, I, I really think it's time for us to look at our local supplement. Could you, uh, give us some information on surrounding and like districts on local supplement differences?
Um, I can. Even what other districts give us a local supplement to the state's salary schedule?
Compared to where, where we're at, of course. I know that's an expenditure nobody wants to add to the budget, especially looking at a possible $400,000 shortfall, but we've got to have teachers.
Susan, I don't know whether you can answer this or whether this is something Dr. Carey would know, but, you know, we, they were, we've been asked for the seven elementary math interventionist?
Yes.
What about our middle schools? I mean, did, do we have those in place there?
No, we don't. We typically don't have intervention at the middle level. That would, of course, money born and object be something.
Well, I mean, I didn't know whether that's something that could come out of ESSR funds, because don't we do some sort of reading comprehension at the middle schools?
We do offer Read 180 at both, uh, actually all three of our middle school kids.
Okay, so.
And that's been in place for over five years.
Is that something that we could look at or see if there's a need for?
Yeah, we can, but the challenge at the middle level is pulling the students and finding a place in their schedule to be able to provide that. For instance, for Read 180, that ends up being one of their two electives that they have. So sometimes the challenge is, when you have a pullout like that, in a lot of cases, they'll miss a band or a course opportunity or opportunity for other electives because of that. So, um, that's something that we have to be careful with because we don't want to, of course, impede their, um, ability to do some other things, um, while they're in there, but that's not to say that, you know, we couldn't find a place for it either. But I know that that can be a challenge, particularly at Mid Carolina Middle School, to be able to offer that all year with the ability to students because they get pulled in so many other directions.
Yeah, well, I just had thought about it because I had actually had a couple of parents who have middle school students who had asked about that, that they had heard that we were putting them in the elementary positions, and that they felt like that the middle school had a dire need too, just because they felt like a lot of the students had, or their students, or their children had fallen behind.
And in Newberry Middle, we do have, um, a block for math intervention there as well. Ms. Chaplin can speak to that more because they are a Title I school and because there is a significant gap, gap of achievement there. That is something that they had in place for, for many years. Do you want to speak on that, Ms. Chaplin? About your math interventionist?
And we use their test scores, well, it was math, it'll be R rated now, and we identify the lowest 50 of the students and place them in the math intervention class. And it's a semester class, so they have, um, two semesters and they get a little something else. So, but we'll use R rated at, at this time.
What kind of success are we seeing with that?
Well, um, I think that they do well because they have the, um, you know, those skills that they're working with. It is individualized to them, you know, what they need, so we do see some success in that and it's building the foundational skills that they are missing a lot of, a lot of times.
Is it something that, um, that, I mean, we can look at maybe for, like at Whitmire and for Mid Carolina? I mean, we've got something similar to that at Newberry, and, and which I know that the ESSR funds aren't there to, to stay, but, I mean, if there's some extra there that maybe that, you know, would be a benefit to, um, those students. And Dr. Carey, do I understand you that Newberry Middle uses Title I funds for that?
And just be mindful too, because we can't supplant, if we were to provide, we can't just provide what Newberry Middle is providing at Mid Carolina and Whitmire, because then we are supplanting Title I money. So we have to go over and above at our Title I schools.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was just.
But that's why the ESSR funds would be, and I have needed to fund.
If we were to provide it with ESSR funds for those schools, we would also have to provide it with ESSR funds there. Because that, you can't use Title I money at a Title I school for something. Whatever we're doing, doing at a Title I school, you have to do it over and above what you do with the other, other schools. That's a requirement from the federal.
So this is kind of why, but I don't see a line item for any device repair or replacement. I know we've begun the process of having devices returned to school. Have we got any idea of what kind of damage we've had this year, or where we stand on it as far as repairing or replacing?
Percentage wise, it's probably been about what we expected.
Which was?
But it's, uh, you know, you're looking at probably 10% of that fleet that went out that are, you know, going to have to have some repairs, but, um, you know, for the most part, everybody's taking on their role, responsibility for those. I'm not, and we, we've got some non-payment that's out there that we're looking for an opportunity to get, get, recover those funds.
Right.
But for the most part, parents have stepped up and, and paid for repairs that, that have been needed.
So how do we go about repairing or replacing the ones we'll need for next year?
We've got some that we're replacing through CARES Act money.
Okay.
So that's, that's kind of what's, what's helping that along.
Is ESSR funding for that also if we need it?
There's a large amount of money that we're spending out of ESSR 2 for, for.
For technology.
Devices, yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're also looking at an insurance custody or program to insure those. There's a couple of different tiers you can get on with that. Unfortunately, none of them are really cheap, but, um, one of them actually covers that. So if the device is lost, there's a police report filed for that device, the insurance company will replace that at full cost.
Have you had some of that?
We have not taken any of those insurance, but that's what we're currently looking at, to see if that's a program we want to offer to the parents to buy, or if we're going to somehow come up with a.
What kind of theft have we experienced thus far?
Not as much as I would have thought. Um, we've had several computers with withdrawn students that have left the, the school district and carry their devices with them. I don't know technically that's theft, but we're, we're working with the principals in the buildings to recover those devices, or at least help us chase them.
I'm glad to hear that you're looking into the insurance program because I have had parents that have called and asked about that, and in fact, one that actually had to pay out of pocket that had, um, has three children in our school system and, and was just explaining what a burden was and wanting to know whether we could look into offering some sort of insurance.
Other, other questions? We will begin, um, our next session scheduled for May the seventeenth.
Is that at six o'clock, Ms. Dow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Six o'clock.
Does that give you enough time, Ms. Dow, to get that local supplement information?
Yes, sir.
All right, does anyone else have any questions?
I, I've got one concerning masks. I know we've already seen some other districts, uh, taking some action on masks, and I, and I fully believe as long as the CDC and DHEC require a mask, I think there's also, I see her shaking her head. Um, I had a phone call from a parent today and was concerned about recess. And thanks to that nature, and I've already talked to the principal, building level principal, that they are allowed to take their mask off at recess as long as they're distanced. I wanted to see if we were doing that at all at our schools. Were we?
All of them should be allowing mask breaks when they're socially distanced.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure we were doing that because I know that with athletics, uh, when we started, uh, practicing and stuff, as long as they were six foot apart, they didn't have to wear a mask. So I didn't see any difference between that and our recess activities as long as they are socially distanced.
Well, the, the other language in the, from the high school league and what was approved by the CDC was that if, depending upon the sport, if, if, if your breathing was compromised by wearing a mask, um, that you could take it off. Obviously, those basketball games, football games, you didn't see kids during games wearing masks. Baseball players aren't wearing.
Well, this was an elementary child, um, a parent, parent of an elementary child talking about, you know, eighty degree weather coming at recess and they're having masks on, and the only time they get to take them off is to, to drink water. And I just wanted to make sure that we were using some common sense. If we're outside or six feet apart, I don't know.
What you just said is the magic word, six feet apart, and they should be allowed a mask break.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm in no way advocating, uh, until DHEC, until DHEC and the CDC changes, I'm in no way of advocating, uh, for getting rid of them. I just want to make sure that we do have an avenue and a, a process in place that will allow our kids to get some fresh air while they're outside.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I am advocating for getting rid of them, but that's another night.
God, I would just like to go ahead and take the opportunity now, um, that Saturday was Principal's Day, in which principals weren't in the schools, and so I'd like to take the time, and, and I'm sure that my fellow board members feel the same, is to thank the principals for everything that they have done this year. We know that they have gone above and beyond and, and, you know, it shows in all the schools.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I know also this week, we're celebrating Teachers Appreciation Week, so we want to thank the teachers, and I think Nurses Week is coming up as well this week, so.
Next week.
We want to, we want to, um, thank the teachers and nurses as well.
All right, anything else?
Yes.
Okay, if there's no further questions, this meeting is adjourned.